Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the ordinary council meeting of the 12th of December for 2024. And it's our last one. And you can see quite a few of us have got into the Christmas spirit. I can see councillor Tully with your very joyous Christmas jacket. And are we allowed to at council, are we allowed to call yours an ugly sweater or just a Christmas sweater? It's lovely to see everyone here this morning. We're starting the meeting at nine oh one. And in attendance, we have all councillors and also we have Mr. Matthew Smith, who is the acting CEO while our CEO is on leave. I'll move straight to an acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud peoples. We're very fortunate this morning to have our opening prayer being done by Reverend Stuart Atkinson from Central Church. If I could ask the good Reverend to up to the lectern.
Thank you, Teresa. Thanks for getting my name right. Scott Muir, the senior pastor was down to be here this morning, but he's ditched you for a beach holiday in Newcastle. Don't blame him. Yeah. And I do apologize for my lack of Christmas attire here this morning. Just a quick thing about our church, Central Church. You might know it as formerly St. Stephen's, the big cathedral down there on Limestone Street. But you probably know us more by our connections with Ipswich Assist, the organisation that's part of our church that offers help, hope and support to the marginalised people of Ipswich. And right now, this morning, there we operate a small supermarket called Restore that offers ridiculously cheap priced food for people who need it. So that's an offer to anybody who'd like to come along to Restore. It's tough times for a lot of people at the moment. And it's a really good thing that that's what Jason is doing down there. So that's a bit about me. I thank you for letting me come and open you in prayer. And it's a good thing to do. So let's do that. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the great privilege we have to live here in this region at this time. As our regional council meets today and as we citizens look on respectfully, we ask you, Lord God, to restrain those latent impulses towards tyranny and greed and individual domination. So that so darken and tempt our hearts. Look, we thank you for the settled peace in which we live and move and have our being at this place and at this time. We pray for our families, our homes, our friends and our community. And we give you thanks for the small blessings in each day sweetening our troubles, for the rains and for the running creeks that are filling our dams. We thank you for the bonds which tie us together here and the connections which give our lives together meaning and purpose and hope. With these in mind, Lord, we see that these men and women before us, our councillors, elected by our own hand, reflect the best of our aspirations and our anxieties and our promises to one another to live well together. Please help us as citizens to respect them, to honour these councillors as we honour each other, and to trust them to strive together for our shared good in a suffering world. Please help our councillors to serve us with you in mind, to speak the truth in love for our benefit, to avoid that very real temptation to be two-faced or duplicitous, or to cultivate our trust rather than corrode it. Help them to be representative of their people, yet accountable and always ultimately to you. Please grant us all grace for today, wisdom for the decisions we make, great and small, which affect those we are responsible for. Grant us your peace. And please, Lord, show us your love. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. And thank you very much for letting us know about Ipswich Assist and Restore, which I think will be much needed over Christmas. Thank you. We now move on to item four, which are apologies and leave of absence. And I have none. I move on to item five, condolences. And I have a condolence motion for Olive Pugh. Olive Pugh affectionately known as Bluey, passed away on the 24th of November 2024. Her remarkable 99 years were a testament to service, love and faith. Born in Brisbane on the 11th of May 1925, one of three, Olive left school at 15 to begin her working life in a department store office before enlisting at 18 during World War Two. As a member of the Women's Auxiliary Air Force, or WAF, Olive's sharp intellect and diligence were recognised when she was selected to serve in the cipher unit at RAF Command in Brisbane, undertaking vital coding and decoding work in support of the armed forces. Olive earned her nickname Bluey from a sergeant who took one look at her during basic training with her beautiful dark red hair and said, you'll be called Bluey. As was common at the time, this is how her WAF friends knew her. Olive Davis retired from paid work on her marriage to her beloved William or Bill Henry Hamilton Pugh in 1952. And together they built a life filled with love and purpose, raising three daughters, Robyn, Glenda and Lenore, and welcoming six grandchildren into their family. Olive tirelessly gave her time and energy to her church and community, embodying a life of service and compassion. Retirement brought Olive and Bill to Caloundra in 1997, where they enjoyed a new chapter until Bill's passing in 2007. Olive's courage and grace carried her through the years that followed, moving to Ipswich in 2011 to Milford Grange where time and home. Olive's later years were filled with moments of recognition and celebration. Olive, as well as Jean Jackson, a fellow WAF cinematographer, were in the lead jeep that ends that ends act day. For the first time, two WAF members had led Ipswich's service, Ipswich service, riding in a jeep again at this year's parade. Olive's legacy was seen and cherished by her community in a heartfelt tribute to her enduring spirit. Her wartime contributions, long and sung, were finally acknowledged in 2021, when the local Ipswich RSL subbranch discovered her at the RSL residential home. And this is when I first met Olive. I was able to join with Olive, her family and other dignitaries to witness the very special moment when she was awarded her long overdue medals. I would like to thank the Ipswich RSL subbranch for organising Olive's medals. Olive's very sensitive and highly confident to work in coding and decoding messages in the cipher unit were so confidential, she actually didn't think that she would get medals because and never requested them because of her work was so confidential. And she was so delighted when she received them. In fact, RAF base Ambly Sadfo or Senior ADF Officer, group captain Dennis Tan at the time, told the story of the day it was that Olive, of how it was when Olive who received the coded message over the cipher that World War Two was ending. She was presented with the Australian Service Medal 1939 to 45, War Medal of 1936 to 45, and the General Service Badge, 77 years after she earned them. A devoted Christian, Olive's unwavering faith was the cornerstone of her life, guiding her through joys and challenges. Her family was her greatest pride and joy. She was a loving mother, grandmother and great grandmother to nine, with the promise of another little one on the way bringing her great delight. Olive's life was rich in love, purpose and meaning. She is a woman of remarkable strength and humility and humour. May her memory be a blessing and her legacy and inspiration, lest we forget. I now move on to item six, which are the tribunes and there are tributes and there are none. Item seven, presentation of petitions. Item eight, presentation and deputations, there are none. We now move on to item nine, which is public participation. And we haven't had too many of these, but we are fortunate enough to have Mr. Ken Salter, who wishes to come in and do a public presentation on the use of sporting facilities in Ipswich. So I'd like to invite you, Mr. Ken Salter, to up to the lectern. And under the policy, Mr. Salter will address us. He'll have two minutes. We've had a good chat and thank you to the committee staff. Council does this as a commitment to transparency and community engagement. So just remind Mr. Salter that you are subject to relevant laws. There are no parliamentary privilege or anything like that. So you are subject to the Privacy Act and Defamation Act.
What a pity.
So I'll hand over to you for two minutes to address council. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Ipswich City Council for giving me the opportunity to address the council today. Just briefly, for those who don't know me, I'm Ken Salter. I was the founder of the Red Bank Plains Rugby League Club. It's been around for 40 years. The first year that we operated, we had 15 juniors. Of this year, we had 700 registered players, 200 registered volunteers, which makes this one of the biggest nurseries in Queensland. If you equate that to Penrith, where everyone talks about having the big nurseries, we're more than one tenth of the entire Penrith nursery. Okay. And as I said, I addressed the players last year before the grand final win, the last training night. I said, when you go out in the field on Sunday, you not only represent Red Bank Plains Rugby League Club, you represent Red Bank Plains. And no other club in Red Bank Plains can lay claim to that, because we are the only grassroots club in Red Bank Plains. All the others are interlopers. Okay. Now it brings me to the points I want to make. We're very concerned about the Gypsy Club. And they're well known for being a Gypsy Club, Bevel Swiffs, because they don't want to settle anywhere permanently. They go where there's opportunities. Back in the mid 60s, they sold four hectares of land, which is air, which is air right to the Bevel Shopping Centre developers. They moved on to East Ipswich. And then they got under the table. They got the rights to the North Ipswich Reserve for the canteen for another 25 years. And I was on the committee of the Ipswich Rugby League. And we questioned them about how they got that agreement. And they said, all you need to know, it's watertight. That's all you need to know. They since moved from there, they've gone to Yamato. And they've twice sold land, once to the main roads about 10 years ago. And then they sold out to the Greyhound.
Thank you, Mr. Salter.
Is that it?
Yes, the two minutes as discussed.
Oh, I was just going to the points.
Sorry?
Could I have another two minutes? I just want to make the points.
Okay. And I'll speak to the council, but the discussion, as discussed, has to be in relation to council. It can't just be a discussion on a community issue. It's got to be on something with council.
Yeah, I was just getting to the council issues.
Okay.
May I? I'm happy to move further.
You're happy to move for another two minutes? Second that.
Oh, good. Thanks very much.
Hang on, I'll just put that to the vote. Anyone who's happy for another two minutes? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Salter. You have another two minutes.
Okay. Well, our concerns are the negotiations between Bevel Swiffs and the council to be located at Red Bank Plains, which will damage us severely, probably wipe us out. All right. Now, they're aligned with these. They've got $16 million in the back pocket. And of course, you know, there's a lot of things they can do with that. Now, to equate that, back in 1998, Seas in Brisbane were going to move to Springfield. And the headlines of the day of the August 3rd, 1995, Springfield moved suicidal. Right. And it goes on to say, Ipswich Rugby League Chairman Bill Roche, yes, he described the possibility of Brisbane Premier League club Seas moving to Springfield suicidal. Roche said that having a second clubs from the British competition in the Ipswich District would suffocate established IRL clubs, especially Goodner and Red Bank Plains, which are nearest to Springfield. We're six kilometres away from Springfield. Goodner is 10 kilometres away. Bevel is one kilometre away. So it was suicidal back then. It's certainly more suicidal now for us to think. So what we want from the council is a proper social and economic impact study on what this will do to not only Red Bank Plains Football Club, but Red Bank Plains in its entirety. We want to make it public. And we want to be able to respond to it before any decision has been made. And I remember back in the 90s, right, when the amalgamation came for the Ipswich and Morton, there's five options. One of those options was for Red Bank Plains to have their own council. Now, if we can't be treated fairly in this regard, we should revisit that option. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Salter. Appreciate that. Thank you. Councillors, under the policy, under public participation policy, we have three options. A, that the matter be received and dealt with immediately. B, that the matter be received and referred to a committee officer for consideration and report. And C, that the matter be noted and no further action taken. I'm not quite sure what was asked of council. I think Mr. Salter mentioned a social economic impact study and so on. I guess I'm open for discussions on how this matter is, because we haven't really been asked to do anything. So whether do I see that matters be noted and no further action, or I'll leave it up to you whether you wish to have this referred to another committee. I'll open up for... Normally, we can't have discussions until something's moved and seconded, but.
I'll move that be referred to the relevant committee for consideration and referral back to council.
Thank you. I'll second that. Thank you, councillor Tully. Any discussion on that? No? Okay, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salter. Item 10 is a matter of public interest. And I have my annual 2024 Year in Review for today. And there are many defining moments this year. And I'd like to reflect on the final Ipswich City Council honorary meeting for 2024. Together with the committee, we have faced challenges and shared many achievements this year. The year kicked off with these council chambers filled with 100 school students from 26 schools for the Parliament and Schools Programme in partnership with the Speaker of the House of Representatives and Member for Oxley, the Honourable Milton Dick, to learn about democracy and civics. Sadly, the unthinkable happened on the 3rd of February, when Volan White was stabbed in front of her granddaughter in a violent robbery in a shopping centre car park. This attack sent shockwaves around the state with five teenagers arrested. The calls from the community for an increased police presence and for laws to be strengthened was amplified by council as we moved to advocate for our shattered community. Laws have been strengthened with the change of government. It's great to see positive action occurring off the back of the advocacy of council, the community, and most importantly, the family of Arlene White. Local government elections were held in March and state government in October alongside our very own Division Four by-election, when we ushered in a new guard with four new councillors joining our ranks. Council launched its successful advocacy programme, We Can't Wait, in the lead up to the state election. By amplifying the voices of Ipswich residents, we received significant commitments towards projects that have been on the community's wishlist for many years, in some cases decades. This included commitments from both major parties to progress the Ipswich Central Second River This included commitments from both major parties to progress the Ipswich Central Second River Crossing to a shovel-ready status. The state and the federal governments jointly committed twenty million dollars for detailed planning on the Cunningham Highway from Ambly to the Swanbank Road interchange. Another advocacy win for Ipswich this year was the inclusion in the state's budget for an enhanced bus service across many of Ipswich's fastest-growing suburbs, as well as a twenty-four million dollar infrastructure agreement signed with the state. This loan will bring forward the upgrade of Ripley Road between Cunningham Highway and Monterey Road. As we continue to plan for our rapid growth, council has made significant strides this year, delivering infrastructure milestones on our major road projects, including the Springfield Parkway and Springfield-Greenbank arterial road duplication and the expansion of Red Bank Plains Road. We are also investing in our community with significant commitments to new and expanded sporting facilities, including securing eighteen million dollars in tripartite funding to upgrade the Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve and Tivoli Sporting Complex. The all-conquering Ipswich State High School has again been presented with the keys to the city of Ipswich to acknowledge the school's ongoing sporting success after winning the Titans Schoolgirl Cup, the NRL Schoolgirls Queensland Trophy and the twenty twenty-four NRL National Schoolgirls Cup title. The TIA Aerospace Ipswich Jets netball team are the twenty twenty-four Heart Sapphire Series premiers. And of course, I must mention Ipswich Grammar's School's sixteen-year-old sprinting sensation, Gout Gout. Gout Gout broke the Australian two-hundred metre record on Saturday at the Australian All Schools Champion Athlet, sorry, at the Australian All Schools Athletics Championship. He also ran ten point oh four seconds in the one hundred metres, the fifth fastest time by any Australian in history. This is only the beginning for him and we look forward to seeing how far he can go. Following Ipswich athlete's success at the Paris Olympic and Paralympic Games, council hosted a community celebration to welcome home Ipswich's sporting finest. Olympians Molly O'Callaghan, Tara Moena, Tara Moena and Ella Ramsey and Paralympians Tamen Kenton Smith and Poppy Wilson not only achieved personal greatness, but they brought immense pride to our community. I was also appointed to the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Organising Committee and have enjoyed playing a role in shaping the biggest event in our country. We remain on the cusp of delivering a new planning scheme, Ipswich Plan twenty twenty-four, which was shaped by the strong response to last year's community consultation. We are now waiting for the state to give its final sign-off before it comes to council for endorsement. We have advocated strongly on waste odours that continue to impact several Ipswich suburbs. As a result of the tireless advocacy of council and community groups, we are steadily seeing the results of our ongoing efforts. We have seen a significant shift in the state's legislation and legal response to non-compliant waste operators and the introduction of stronger regulations, particularly for composting facilities. We've also seen some movement from the new Queensland Government with its commitment to a public health inquiry into waste odours. This comes two years on from the council's unanimous cause for an inquiry into the long-term health impacts of waste odours. It brings me great pride to see that the Ipswich community achieve, to see what the Ipswich community can achieve when we all stand up together on this important issue. Council has also introduced its own on-demand curbside collection service, boosting the free service from every two years to annually and putting residents in control of when they would like to use it. Since then, we have seen ten thousand five hundred and eighteen households request bags with one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine tonnes of items collected and amazingly, sixty-nine percent of that waste has been recycled. Our economy has surpassed the thirteen billion dollar mark this year, growing by six point eight percent on last year, demonstrating our city's resilience in the face of inflation and rising cost of living. Council was named Innovator of the Year at the inaugural twenty twenty-four Small Business Friendly Awards for the Ipswich Central Revitalisation Project. The revitalisation of our city's heart has also achieved some major milestones, including the completion of some major construction works in the Nicholas Street precinct. This year, we have welcomed anchor tenants Hoyts, General Public, Hotel Commonwealth, as well as Head to Health and Kicking In, and we have seen almost one point two million people flock through our revitalised city centre. More than seventy-five percent of the available retail and commercial leasing space across the precinct is now leased and opened or on the path to opening, with twenty-seven tenancies now filled and eleven remaining for new businesses and traders to move into our growing city. And we are delighted to have more businesses moving in and set up to open next year. This year, the precinct received a Minister's Award for Urban Design Excellence and also the Movement and Pace Place Award, acknowledging delivering a high-quality city heart that is maximising social and economic benefits for the Ipswich community. Tomorrow night, our Nicholas Street precinct will turn into the Lightfield St Nicholas precinct until Sunday, the twenty-second of December, providing a magnificent free event for thousands to enjoy. I eagerly anticipate the next chapter in Ipswich's history and as we shape a vibrant and inclusive city that honours its past while embracing the new opportunities as we head into the future. Thank you. And now move on to item eleven, which is declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. And in accordance with Local Government Act, section one fifty EQ, I have a declarable conflict of interest in item sixteen point two, which is Council of May's South East Queensland twenty twenty-five Singapore and Europe Mission and Proposed Nerama City Visit. As this report that's coming to council involves a proposal for me to participate in an overseas delegation. I propose to the council that I participate in the discussion, but I do not participate in the vote. However, this is up to council how they'd like to do it. So I put forward that motion that I participate in the discussion, but do not participate in the vote.
Yeah. Clarify, I have an alternative motion, but I'll ask a question, but um what, either to you or the acting CEO, um, do you chair the meeting at this stage when we're actually voting on um whether you're permitted to stay? Because you can't vote on the matter. Um, I'm just talking about the actual chairing of it.
It's my understanding I still do, but I might put to the CEO.
Apologies, I probably need to defer to Mr Wade.
Okay.
Yeah. I can check with Wade just to clarify.
He is.
He's usually outside.
Yeah. Just bear with me a moment. Um, yes, Wade's advised that the mayor can continue to chair.
Yes, but thank you very much for that clarification.
Are you moving the motion or proposing that as an outcome?
I'm proposing um how to manage my declaration of my, of conflict of interest, not the matter itself. So I'm saying, coming to you saying, I have a um declarable conflict of interest. I propose that I can participate in the decision, but not vote. But if you have some other suggestion, I'm open. If you don't want to be involved in the discussion, it's up to this council.
We usually ask in these matters, is there any personal direct financial benefit?
There is none. There is no personal benefit to me.
Well, I'll move that Mayor Harding participate uh in the meeting and votes on the item um because there's no personal or financial benefit to her and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest.
Seconded, um, any discussion on that? No, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, sorry. I'm just so sorry. Um, let me, can maybe take that vote again. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, councillor Nelson. Uh, those against, there are none. Uh, those abstaining, that would be myself. Thank you, councillor Nelson. I'll now open up for any other declarations of interest. We now move on to item twelve point one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting. I'll move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty-eighth of November twenty twenty-four be confirmed. Do I have a second? I think you, councillor Doyle. Any errors, omissions, corrections? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room and carried. Item thirteen, mayoral minute, there is none. Item fourteen, business outstanding, there is none. We now move on to item fifteen, which is the reception and consideration of committing reports. And the first one is fifteen point one, the Report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. And I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, councillor Nelson, to see how you'd like that report managed.
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'd like to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number two thousand and twenty-four oh seven, dated the third of December twenty twenty-four for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll open up to the mover for discussion.
Uh, yes, ma'am, just to discuss a few items, um, very briefly in response to item one, uh, the petition for the residential unit developments along WM Hughes Street, North Ipswich. Since two thousand and eleven, there's been a greater understanding of local hydrology and the impacts of floods on our city. I recognise, Mayor, that we do have an open application on that site and it is currently out for uh public notification um for people to make submissions if they care to. Um, obviously, our recent review and preparation of the new planning scheme certainly highlights a greater need for development to prove itself against possible flood impacts. And I commend the instigator of the petition um and those who supported it for being heard on this issue and their desire for greater scrutiny in this regard. Uh, with this in mind, I'd encourage petitioners to make their concerns heard further through the public notification period. And I understand that there have been a number of submissions received by council already. Um, it's currently, as I said, in the public notification period and all properly made submissions will be considered. Uh, I also uh would like to discuss item three, which speaks to the City of Ipswich Local Housing Action Plan. Now, the the report that accompanied this in committee was quite an eye-opener, Mayor. Uh, this actual draft plan is informed by both evidence and stakeholder expertise. It details forty proposed priority actions that our council can take in the support and encouragement of housing availability and affordability in our city. It provides the mechanism to bring together all stakeholders with influence on housing outcomes to work collaboratively to deliver better outcomes. And it will enable council to partner with state and private community sectors to progress priority actions for the benefit of the community. Uh, one of the most concerning aspects of that report highlighted that as opposed to the nineteen eighties, where the average dwelling price was just under two times the average household income, it is now some five times the average household income for people to try and obtain a home. And this is likely to rise in the lead up to the twenty thirty-two Olympics. So I commend this report to council. Um, and further, in relation to item six, just one of the matters of the Capital Delivery Report, uh, there is a new playground to open up tomorrow in Cameron Park. I know that that is something that councillor Doyle has been quite um involved in. And we're quite excited by the prospect of this new playground, which is um a very, very attractive playground. And I think the kids of today will have a lot of fun, particularly in the lead up to Christmas. And I, and that should be open tomorrow. So the Cameron Park Playground, which replaces the original playground, which was uh beyond its serviceable um date. Uh, and it should be something that the people of Silkstone, Newtown, Beval and the surrounding suburbs should enjoy for many years to come. Uh, in closing, Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to wish my fellow councillors, yourself, Mayor, and the staff of both the um infrastructure and planning departments, but also council staff in general, a very merry Christmas. A happy and joyful time and spiritual time for them with their families this Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Nelson. The deputy mayor, would you like to speak to the matter as the seconder?
No, thank you, Chair.
I'll open up for discussion. Um, I'd just like to also speak in regards to item one, which is the petition. I'd like to thank the one hundred residents of Woodend, Moore's Pocket, Ipswich and Basin Pocket, who have brought their concerns to council with this petition. Um, our city is growing and we're also a city that floods. So I understand concern from residents around how we develop. This development is currently moving through the legislative approvals process is currently at the public notification stage. I would strongly urge residents to consider making a submission as part of this process. As properly made submissions around any objection to the planning aspect of the proposal will be considered by council. I know when I checked on the weekend, I think it was at twenty-three, but I understand there are a whole heap of handwritten ones. Uh, myself, councillor Nelson and councillor Doyle were at the um community meeting on Sunday morning and there was a big box of handwritten submissions as well. So I believe that they will get over that fifty mark. I find the community thinks that council can just stop a development application partway through it, but that's not how it actually works. Uh, we must go through the full process for an application to be assessed under the planning scheme. And the planning framework for how developments are assessed is set by the state government. Uh, we do have to work within this framework and we do not have the scope, don't have the scope that the community may think that we have. We have asked for the state government to join with council to explain to the community how growth is planned for South East Queensland and how development applications are assessed and how infrastructure is funded. Uh, on item three as well, like yourself, councillor Nelson, on the local housing action plan, there is a need around the country adhering Ipswich for housing diversity and affordability in the right locations. We need housing that is close to jobs, transport and services to meet the needs of everyone in the community at each stage of life. As Queensland's fastest-growing city over the next twenty years, this draft policy is timely to assist in addressing our city's current and emerging housing challenges. This draft plan has been developed in response to the state government's Housing and Homelessness Action Plan twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five and with the support of the LGOQ and the state government. It will allow us to identify ways to address the specific housing requirements of the Ipswich community. Housing should be affordable and meet the needs of household sizes and types with consideration to versatility and accessibility. And we'll also work collaboratively with all levels of government and help coordinate responsible responses with private not-for-profit organisations, the Local Government Association of Queensland and relevant state and government agencies. Um, any other discussion? No, in that case, councillor Nelson, the mover, do you have anything to say in reply? Not that anyone was against anything you said.
No, thank you for your supportive comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to fifteen point two, which is the Report of the Finance and Governance Committee of the third of December twenty twenty-four. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he'd like this report managed.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll move that the Finance and Governance Committee Report number twenty twenty-four oh seven be received and the recommendations contained therein be adopted, subject to the um change in um item four in relation to, which has been circulated, I believe. Um, yeah, I'll move that, but then I've got another amendment to make.
Do you mind just reading that out? I know it was emailed out to us, but just for the, for the public?
Yes, that um council, so the um um, the change will be that in item four titled Concession for General Rates Multiple Properties, the inclusion of the following amendments, that the following wording for the recommendation appear prior to table one, that having satisfied the criteria in section one twenty of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve, as well as the rates concession policy, the properties listed in table one be granted at one hundred percent concession on the differential general rate from the tenth of June twenty twenty-four being the date of application and that the suburb name of spelt W U L K U R A K E be amended to Walkeraka, W U L K U R A K A.
Thank you, councillor. I appreciate that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Nelson. G畜t, would you like to speak to the report?
I do have a, in relation to that very matter, so I've moved that to, so there can be discussion. I think there's um two other amendments that are required. If councillors look um in the agenda, Aspen All Street, um thirteen Aspen All Street and seventeen are both listed as Goodna. I believe they're in Walkeraka. Um, I'm sure. There's no Aspen All Street in Goodna.
It is like.
It is like.
Well.
It is on the border.
Yeah, so it depends which numbers.
Okay, um, could, we probably need to.
I'm just, I'm just gonna do a search on my phone.
Yeah, I found the, yeah, it might have been listed as both, but I found on Google Maps that it was listed as Walkeraka.
I just want to go into Google Maps. It's got thirteen Aspen All Street, for instance, is like heart.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll propose, if the seconder agrees to change those two from Goodna to like heart.
Okay.
So, so agreed.
So I'm just saying on the mapping, on Google Maps, it's saying it's like heart, not Walkeraka.
Yeah, I did, I did a search. It came up with the words Walkeraka. So, but that's Google for you.
Yeah. Would you be happy if we just asked the organisation to correct the suburb?
Um, yes, um. But well, I'll.
I guess it could always, it could always come to, we could always do another amendment if you want to keep it to Walkeraka. You could always come back.
I'll just propose that the, the two items for Aspen All Street be amended by the organisation to the correct suburb name as wording.
Thank you very much, councillor Tyler.
Again, agreed.
The only item I wish to speak to is item nine, which is the recommendation to award a tender for the Ripley Road and Fisher Road upgrade. This is a very significant tender, which is being recommended to the council today for seventy-seven point four million dollars. That, that section, that area between the Centenary Highway and to the east is a very significantly and rapidly growing area, and residents in that area should be now assured that the, the awarding of this design and construct tender will, will enable this to proceed. That upgrading, and I always say to residents, there's very few councils or governments, state or federal in Australia, that build roads before they're needed. I think the only country in the world that does that is probably China, but we, we've now made a firm recommendation to the council that between the Cunningham Highway and the Centenary Highway, this is in need of the, the upgrade. It's one of the largest growing areas in Australia, fastest-growing areas as Ipswich is itself, so I trust that the, you know, the residents in that area and the people of Ipswich generally, and others who are using this road connection, will see the benefit of this as we move forward with this recommendation, which I strongly recommend to the council to adopt.
Thank you, councillor Tyler. Just making sure we've got the right recommendation that's before us. Amendment. Thank you. Councillor Tenely, as the second, do we wish to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll open it for other discussion. No, I'll just wait for the, that additional dot point on Aspen All Street, so everyone can see that on there. Councillor Tenely, would you like to write a reply, anything to, happy to go to the vote? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to fifteen point three, which is the report of the Community and Sport Committee of the third of December twenty twenty-four, and I'll hand over to the chair of that committee, councillor Manson, to see how we'd like this report managed.
Just happy to move the recommendation as per this morning's meeting agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Manson, would you like to speak to the report?
Yeah, not a lot to report on that wasn't already discussed at the committee, just active kids report, customer services report card, and a set of meeting minutes for the advisory committees that took place, so I recommend it to the committee, the council.
Deputy mayor, do you wish to speak to it? Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tenely.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just item two, the council's Aboriginal Torresator on the Community Engagement Guide endorsement. This is a wonderful document, and I'd just commend the staff that put it together. Incredible document that certainly will inform our decisions going forward, and particularly our methodology of engagement with our local First Nations residents, and can I just say that that document was highly enlightening in that it certainly changed my perspective in many ways of dealing with First Nations, and whilst having always been quite respectful, just knowing the nuances of that is highly important for our way of going forward with First Nations on the path to reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tenely. Are you happy to put it to the vote? Oh, councillor, sorry, I didn't see you line.
It's just, just an operational sort of thing. Items three and four, and this is for the benefit of councillors, but the wider community, it's not apparent from the recommendation, it just talks about adopt the recommendations of the, in three from the Library Services Advisory Committee, and so does four, but it, it doesn't list, and people need to do a bit of backtracking to find those specific recommendations. Can I just ask the organisation, just, just look at the practicality, or how easily they, they couldn't be incorporated, those actual recommendations being incorporated into this recommendation, so it becomes a complete recommendation in its own right.
Yep, so the individual recommendations of those advisory committees? Yep, I'm getting a nod from, from the secretary.
Well, not, not, not to add these ones today, but, you know, for the future.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item fifteen point four, the report of the Environment and Sustainability. I'm just checking something here. It should be economic. Okay, thank you, sorry. Let me just check my pack. Okay, you've got me out of.
Just keeping us on our toes, I believe.
Yes, sorry, yes, hang on. I tried to follow. Thank you. So now it's fifteen point four, the Environment Sustainability Committee of the third of December twenty twenty-four, and I'll hand over to the, the chair of that committee, councillor Madden, to see how we'd like this report managed.
Sustainability, oh, sorry, good. I'm pleased to move that the Environment and Sustainability Committee Report number two thousand and twenty-four oh seven be moved for reception and acceptance.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tenely. I'll hand over to you, councillor Madden, to speak to the report.
Thanks very much, Mayor. As always, I thank the council officers who prepared reports for the committee. There's two items that I'd just like to say a few words about, Mayor. That's, first one's item one, a very important report, the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive Quarterly Report. With this report, it concerns the continuing implementation of Ipswich City Council's Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive, following in the review of the directive at the ordinary council meeting on the third of September two thousand and twenty-four. As outlined in the report, a significant body of work continues to implementation action against the ten principles of the directive. Mayor, the other item I just wanted to mention was the, the following item, item five, the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust Notice of Annual Precept for twenty-four twenty-five. We are having a meeting of the, of the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust tomorrow, but on the eighth of November, I was pleased to attend the annual general meeting for the Queensland Ipswich, the Queensland Rivers Improvement Trust. It was a very enlightening meeting, and one of the members of the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust made a, delivered a report, and her name was Alana Klupfel, and for your benefit, I'll spell this, Alana is A L A N A, Klupfel is K L U P F E L. And I just wanted to say, her report dealt with an item out near Hidden Vale, and it was, it was titled Dealing with Compliance, and the example she spoke about was the rock chute works on Western Creek out towards Grandchester, and it was very enlightening. That's all I wanted to say, Mayor, other than to take the opportunity, while I have my microphone on, to wish everyone a happy and safe Christmas, our councillors, our council staff, the residents of Division Four, and the residents of Ipswich more broadly, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tenely. Was there a motion, or was there some suggestion that there's going to be amendment to item three, the sustainability policy review, to add a line? I had a note, I thought, I saw an email.
Oh, that's correct, yes. Thank you for reminding me, Mayor. There was a, I nominated an amendment to the actual policy itself. Just need to bring that up quickly, if I may. I believe you, that Vicky has a copy of the amendment, have you?
Would you like to, I think you're wanting to add another sentence to the opening statement in the policy, is that correct? Or amend a sentence?
The amendment was that to add a sentence on to the end of part one, part one being titled Statement of the Policy, and that sentence reads, "The commitment to being a sustainable city also recognises the evidence-based science for climate change, which will be taken into consideration in the transition to a sustainable city."
Thank you. I'll just check with councillor Madden as the mover. You're happy with that, and obviously councillor Tenely, you're the secular, you're happy with that?
And again, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me of that amendment.
I'll now open item fifteen point four for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I now move on to item fifteen point five, the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee of the third of December twenty twenty-four, and I'll hand over to councillor Augustine to see how she would like this report managed.
Mayor, as I didn't chair the meeting, can I throw to councillor Doyle?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Doyle. As the acting chair of that meeting, how would you like this, this report managed?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm happy to move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Johnick. Councillor Doyle, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, no doubt. Councillor Augustine as chair of that committee might have some words to say, but yes, if, if, if I may, I just firstly would like to thank the economic, Ipswich City Council's Economic Development Team for their important strategic work, programming, and initiatives that they've delivered for our small businesses and larger corporations right across Ipswich this year. Setting up, supporting our small businesses is so critical, they are the backbone of any local economy, and the programming that's delivered by our Economic Development Team is always exceptional. The business development opportunities and chasing down the larger corporations, encouraging them to set up business here in Ipswich provides obviously lots of employment opportunities for our locals, as well as the flow-on economic benefits to the wider city. So yes, thank you to Dan and the team. They obviously work also very closely with marketing. Thank you to our marketing team promoting Ipswich every single day to wider southeast Queensland, Queensland, and then nationally. They do an amazing job in putting our best foot forward, that is, Ipswich City is a great place to live, work, and play. I would also like to call out the Nicholas Street Precinct team. What a four years we've had. I would like to personally say that I believe that team is probably the GOAT. It seems that the last four years, what could be thrown at them has been thrown at them, and each time they've risen to the challenge with absolute professionalism, and we've seen the precinct now open up with obviously Hoyts and Commonwealth Hotel, and it's lovely to see it finally humming, speaking with two local restaurateurs in the top of town. They are absolutely convinced they're seeing an uptake in, in visitation to the local establishments, which is a direct flow-on effect from what we've done here in Nicholas Street Precinct. Also, just want to call out our team within cultural development right across council. Thank you for all that you do, and I guess the probably the, the big, most recent event we had twenty-five years' celebration for Ipswich City Gallery, which is an enormous milestone. Ipswich's gallery is considered one of the top regional galleries, and look forward to working with councillor Augustine in this space. We have a very healthy and active local arts community, very passionate with, with great ideas, so looking forward to working with them. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy mayor, as the second, do you wish to speak to the matter?
No, thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Open up for discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point six, which is the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the thirteenth of November twenty twenty-four. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask of council officers on this matter? In that case, I'll move that council adopt the recommendations of the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the thirteenth of November twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tenely. Any discussions, like yourself and the deputy mayor sit on that committee, any discussion?
Just a brief overview that, in my humble opinion, I think that there's a great work that's done in the Audit and Risk Committee at the moment, and they're keeping a close eye and on progressive matters, including cybersecurity and our programs for upgrading computer systems and technology. So thank you.
And if I may just thank the representatives of the Audit and Risk Committee, those that are independently appointed to that committee, and also the, those representatives from the Audit Office and Treasury who are involved as well, their input has been fantastic and appreciated.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to officers' report, sorry, other reports. Sixteen point one is the CEO's Organizational Performance Report for November twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions of the CEO on this report? No? In that case, I move that the CEO's Organizational Performance Report for the month of November twenty twenty-four be received and contents noted. Do I have a second, councillor Madden? Thank you. In speaking to this, I see in line with council's recent boosting of waterway funding, it's good to see the urban rivers and catchments program jointly funded by the Australian Government and council will upgrade nine priority waterway sites across Ipswich, which will be transformed. The four million dollar investment aims to rehabilitate more than fourteen thousand square meters riparian corridor over four years. More than thirty thousand native plants will be installed with additional efforts to increase fish habitat through large woody debris installations, and we couldn't have done that without the federal government. It's a million dollars from council and three million from the, the federal government. I see engagement has now closed on the voluntary home buyback program, land uses, and I look forward to seeing that community feedback on the potential future use of, of the options of that land, and really pleased to see that we're reopening the more resilient colleges crossing Recreation Reserve for the community, and enjoy that tomorrow in time for the school holidays. I'll open it up for any other discussion. There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. The next item is sixteen point two, the Council of Mayors, Southeast Queensland, twenty twenty-five Singapore and Europe Mission and Proposed Nerima City Visit, and we have three recommendations there, and one is that Mayor Harding participates in the Council of Mayors Southeast Queensland International Delegation twenty twenty-five Singapore and Europe Mission, and the B that council approved Mayor Harding's visit to Nerima City prior to joining the Council of Mayors International Delegation, in line with the estimated costs in this report, which I believe is about three thousand dollars per participant, and C that one council officer, being the chief of staff in the office of the mayor, travelled to support the mayor on the Nerima visit and the Council of Mayors International Delegation. I'd also like to add a D that was something we had discussed, but that also is to, for the deputy mayor to be part of the Nerima delegation, and we've just been given some costs this morning, which I'll, I'll do in council. So if I could add a D, that the deputy mayor is included in the Nerima delegation. So I will move that. Do I have a second for that? No, councillor Doyle? Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Yes.
Um, just in discussion, um, so I have prior personal engagements at that time.
Right.
Um, for that period next month. So I am happy to open the the delegation up to another councillor that wants to attend.
Okay.
Um, but unfortunately, I um have personal commitments with my children in that period.
No, that's that's understood. I know it's the first week of school as well. Um, may I change that then? Um, to the deputy mayor that um, that I guess another councillor?
Yeah. I was going to propose that um the deputy mayor or um another councillor.
Yeah.
Just to have the approval in place.
Just to have the option. Okay, so we'll have deputy mayor or another councillor be included, just to keep our options open in case.
Can I just clarify, like the deputy mayors ruled themselves out. And if if I I don't know, no, there's any need to have the words there. But how do we identify how that other councillor would be appointed?
I'm happy to have that discussion.
Can we resolve that today?
I'm happy to have, yeah, so it would be better if it was resolved today.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Yep. I just thought I'd open it up for um discussion. Um, in in speaking to it, uh, as a member of the Council of Mayor's of South East Queensland, the South East Queensland Mayor's are invited to participate in this incredible opportunity to visit and learn from other cities about how they have maximised the legacies and benefits of global events such as the Paris twenty twenty-three, sorry, twenty twenty-four Games or the Manchester Commonwealth Games. It will also explore the innovative ways that they have dealt with common challenges such as waste management, sustainability, connectivity and people movement. Council of Mayor's memberships, uh, membership includes majority of councils across the southeast from large councils such as Brisbane to smaller sized councils such as Noosa and Somerset. They recognise that not every council is in the position to mount their own delegation to learn from these cities. So offer this opportunity to mayors at no additional expense to their councils. This would be my first international delegation as mayor of Ipswich. And I believe a valuable learning exercise for our city as we prepare for the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Games. It also presents a cost-effective opportunity to include a visit to our Japanese sister city, Nerama City. Uh, this year marks thirty years of our sister city relationship with the Nerama City. And while they have both, uh, they sent both an elected representative deleg- to Ipswich, we are yet to send a delegation to Nerama City, certainly as my time in mayor, as mayor. At this stage, I've always declined. In our early discussions about these opportunities, I thank councillors for their input and support. And also note the suggestion of adding a councillor to the Nerama visit, uh, given their level of engagement with Ipswich. I refer to additional advice circulated to all councillors providing an up-to-date indicative costings, knowing that the flights have varied since the original report was drafted. I also draw your attention to the potential inclusion of a senior officer, namely my chief of staff, in both the council of mayor's delegation and Nerama City visit, which would incur a cost to council. While any cost council would, should be given due consideration. This is a significant delegation with many opportunities to learn, meet new contact contacts and capture learnings that council can use its planning and advocacy for Brisbane twenty thirty-two. Having a senior officer in support will allow me to maintain, remain across my mayoral duties and issues impacting Ipswich at the time of the delegation, while also taking full advantage of both trips. As per the relevant policy, a report will be prepared and presented back to the council uh, of of the activities, outcomes and findings of both the Nerama City visit and council of mayor's delegation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but I just thought, although this morning, uh, acting CEO, you also sent out a um costing, do you mind just outlining costings for an additional um councillor to attend?
Certainly, ma'am. Um, and and just based on that information, just noting that that costing is still approximate and um unable to be finalised until we're ready with names and and dates. So it is still subject to fluctuate due to some of the travel industry variations and um exchange rates as well, given we are talking about some some costs in in Japan as the host nation as well. So at this point in time, we think that the cost for around travel and airfares is around four thousand nine hundred dollars. Again, based on estimates most recently of this week. Um, and allowance for some other incidental costs in terms of airport transfers and the like again, which are a little bit hard to estimate and depending on the time and the nature of of transport and the number that might be in the delegation. Um, we've also included in that estimate um the possibility for the need for an interpreter. Um, uh, again, um, without, you know, specifically booking something like those services. These are indicative costs based on research that we've done um and would need to be worked through with the Nerama delegation as well as to whether or not they would choose to provide an interpreter or that would be something we would need to provide as council ourselves.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I guess councillor Doyle's a second. Do you wish to speak to the matter? No, I'll open up for discussion.
We able to clarify if there's another councillor who's uh wishing to?
Absolutely. So do, yeah, so um, I guess we are look at, do we have more of a community focus or an economic development focus might might assist? Open to uh options?
I'm I'm happy to uh recommend councillor Augustine uh to attend.
I'll just check if she's available and I haven't I haven't approached her on this yet.
Um, I'm open if anyone else would like to go on. Um, I don't travel very well, ma'am, so, yeah, so I just limit my travel um to here in Australia.
Okay.
So if anyone else is open and would like to go, thank you.
Do you have a passport? Okay, I think councillor doesn't have a passport, which would I think would be an issue.
Um, sorry, ma'am, just in relation to D, is it not um a agreement to which councillor occurs sometime prior to, words to that effect?
I'm 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 flexible. I just know that the organisation will want name, a name as soon as possible for to book tickets if if we're proceeding with that. Um, I do note that a part of the Nerama visit is very, uh, is is cultural as well.
Ma'am, if there's no, if there's no councillor willing to go, is it not superfluous?
I guess I am. So is is the deputy chair, I don't know, or community, chair of community? There's no indication?
I think we got some indication from councillor Augustine, so I I'll formally move that, that she be-
Uh, she, she, I think. I thought she was, were you accepting or declining councillor Augustine? I think she was declining. She declined.
Well, do we leave it open by suggesting that the CEO be authori- words to this effect? That the CEO be authorised to approve uh another councillor if available?
Okay. I'll just check with the acting CEO. You're happy with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you councillor Tully. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor?
I I have a uh, an amendment to move, uh, it'd be paragraph E, that in accordance with section one sixty-five of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, the deputy mayor counsel and the cul-de-sac act as mayor during the absence of the mayor referred to in this motion.
So, um, can I just get a call for a question for the CEO? That is a decision by the mayor, so the council can't compel me. That is a decision by the mayor, so not 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 of the council. So, um, I I will be still the mayor while I'm away.
Yes, that that is true. The section one sixty-five is very clear that in the absence of the mayor, uh, the deputy mayor acts as the mayor.
But I'm not the, I'm not absent. I'm still here, I'm still the mayor, I'm still being the mayor and I'm contactable.
I think that's an unusual interpretation that uh, that if you're in Paris, for example, you're still in Ipswich, that you are absent from the city for for sixteen or seventeen days.
Hmm.
So it's, so the regulation, the regulation is quite clear, it's very clear. Um, uh, one sixty-five, that if you're absent, the deputy mayor acts. So this is just stating, um, you know, the fact that you you will be absent from the city. I I don't, don't think you can really say that you're present in the city if you're if you're in Paris. Or in Singapore or in Japan.
So I would like to get advice because um it's my understanding, the advice that I've had, that I'm still doing the mayoral duties. I, as most people know, I work twenty-four seven. Um, so I'm still doing the 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 um, the duties of the mayor. So I'm contactable and nowadays with teams and phone calls and connectivity, that's that very easy to do. If something happens and, you know, like if some media comes on, obviously the deputy mayor would step up for that. But if there was something in particular had to be here, I could easily um delegate that to the uh, to the deputy mayor.
I I don't think any interpretation can override the statutory provision under regulation one sixty-five.
I guess I I'm not absent though. I'm still being the mayor.
Well, I'm not sure what interpretation you're putting on absent.
Well, I'm not on leave, I'm here. I'm I'm still the mayor.
Absent means you're not present. Now, I I've moved that, I've moved that amendment.
Um, well, I guess I don't, I don't agree with that. Um, I'll just check with the, so it won't proceed.
Well, we'll proceed if there's a second amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Could we have that up there, written up there? Yep.
Yeah, again, something else that's discussed, not with all of us.
Can I?
Yeah, I-
Are we in discussion now?
No, there's got to be a minute, a second.
So at the moment, we're discussing whether this amendment would proceed. So obviously councillor Tully has, so not to the, not to the entire matter, but whether whether this amendment E will be included or not. That's what we're discussing at the moment. So as the mover, councillor Tully, would you like to speak to that amendment?
Yes, I think it just states the provisions of section one sixty-five. Um, obviously, the government considers that even with modern technology, um, a person, it's talking about their physical absence, uh, not just their their mental uh absence or their um uh ability to um be contactable by phone um or some other technical means. Section one sixty-five makes it, you know, uses very plain English, that uh in the absence of the mayor, uh, that um the deputy mayor does act. Um, and I think that's sort of important. We're talking about a a um, a period of sixteen or seventeen days. Um, on my calculations there from late January to into February. I just think it makes it clear, and it follows the uh, what has happened in the past with overseas visits.
Thank you. Um, as the second councillor, do you wish to speak to the, that that, just the, just for that, that recommendation?
Just with respect to the amendment, obviously I moved it for um discussion purposes and it's look, it's my, um, it's certainly my opinion and experience that um this is common practice. It's actually automatic under the legislation, so I'm just reinforcing, I'm happy to reinforce the actual legislation that is involved here. Uh, more importantly, it is common practice. Um, it's exercised at all times when um the mayor is physically absent. Uh, and I don't mean absent as in just in Brisbane.
Yep.
I mean absent as in um particularly in this instance overseas.
Thank you. Any discussion with, councillor, you have your lot, your-
Oh, just, uh, uh, has there not been, uh, I I note the comments that um around what other councils do. Have we not here um several times this year had a departure from common practice compared to other local governments? Um, and and please don't mention unified unity to me again, because this is a very clear example of a decision by a few without including the whole group.
Thank you. Um, in in speaking to this, um, obviously-
Can I just, sorry?
I'm the chair, I could, I'm speaking.
My mic was on before councillor-
Yeah, I'm I'm the chair, I get to decide the order. Excuse me, can I just, I'm speaking. Um, in speaking um to this, um, I I note some words are being thrown around that I I think are not factually correct, like like automatic. And I think it's always important to go back to the act, so I'll just read out section um one six five of the Local Government Act, which says acting mayor. And point one, the deputy mayor acts for the mayor during A, the absence or temporary incapacity of the mayor, or B, a vacancy in the office of the mayor. And two, if the office of the mayor is vacant and the deputy mayor is prevented by absence or temporary incapacity from acting as mayor, or B, the mayor and deputy mayor both prevent it. Um, so I I'm not, I'm I'm, it says absence or temporary incapacity, obviously I'm I'm still doing the role. Um, so my other thing is too, I did raise this travel with you and and discussed it um with you guys last week. It would have been nice if we had this discussion back then as well, or at least raise this point rather than just raising it here today.
Well, it wasn't front and centre of my mind during that discussion, but can I just say, like, actually as a point of order, that there are two elements in that first um element that arose. One was absence, one was temporary incapacity. Um, there's no suggestion of a temporary incapacity, which is an entirely different situation. But I I think common, common, you know, proper interpretation is that during those seventeen days, you're absent from the city. And and that it's um um appropriate that that the deputy mayor act as the mayor.
Okay. So thank you. I think, um, and I'm gonna lean on you, CEO, that um we have a different interpretation of the act. And obviously, the act overrides any resolution that council does. So could I get this advice from the Department of Local Government on that in particular? And if if I'm wrong, I'll, oh, absolutely, uh, no, no issues. I just make make sure that the legislation's being followed.
I think ma'am, we need to take this one on notice just to clarify the position.
So obviously, we'll go through the process here, but to me, the act is is to be followed. So um, I guess let's just look at, um, will um recommendation E, we're now just just discussing about the amendment. Is discussion, is recommendation E going to be included? That's, and once that vote is done, then we'll go back to actually discussing the substantial, but the entire matter. So for those who would like uh recommendation E included as moved by councillor Tully and seconded by councillor Tully, please raise your hand. So that's councillor Madden, uh councillor Antonelli, councillor Tully and then and the deputy mayor. So that's-
Point of order, are we voting on the amendment E?
As as said, we're just voting-
This is a point of order. Who moved this actual matter?
The entire matter, sixteen point two?
Yeah.
I moved it and councillor Doyle uh moved it. So councillor Tully wanted to make this amendment, I didn't agree. So he's now asked if he could move this as an amendment, so he's moved it, councillor Tully has seconded it. We've had a discussion.
I wasn't included in the discussion.
My apologies, deputy mayor, yes.
So I can speak now?
My apologies, yes.
Um, I think this is in line with the act and that's why a deputy mayor is appointed. So any um negating what the act specifies and I'm, but I'm happy to take it on notice and um get further intel on the meaning of absent. Um, but I'm just wondering, and no, we're not all councillors, but what do other councils do? So I know that um mayor Milligan, um, uh, mayor Went, mayor Sharp in our area will be on the trip. Um, are they leaving um the deputy mayor as acting in case of disasters, et cetera? Noting that they'll be in different time zones around the world? I'm just looking at the practicality of why this is, seems to be such an offence.
I I don't know what other, what they are doing. I just, I think we just said that we'd find out from the Department of Local Government for a clarification. I think we all have different interpretations. Any other discussion? Yes?
Sorry, ma'am, I wasn't really in the zone listening, so I'm not too sure where I'm up to on this. But for me, I I I'm not not disagreeing with that, but I I would like it to just state it being the deputy mayor. Only because when we look at the legislation and we look at policy and whatever, it doesn't actually name an actual person. Nothing against you, um, councillor, um, Johnny. But I I, if it was, I would say it to be just the deputy mayor, the deputy mayor.
I I I'm happy to, um-
You, the microphone, microphone.
I'm happy to propose an amendment to delete the name of the uh, of the current deputy mayor, if that's agreeable to the second.
Councillor Tully, are you agreeable to this amendment?
Yeah, I think that's um, that's a good suggestion by councillor Augustine.
Thank you. Any other discussion on including recommendation E? I'll put that to the vote now. Those in favour of recommendation E forming part of this uh report, put your hand up. Thank you, you've got councillor um Madden, councillor Martin, councillor Antonelli, councillor Tully, councillor, so deputy mayor and um councillor Madsen, thank you. So those against?
Oh, sorry, sorry, I saw I saw councillor Augustine's hand.
Oh, I didn't say, sorry, I was going around. So you agree to that? To, okay, for that, okay, thank you, and councillor Augustine. Those against? I'd be myself. Those abstaining is councillor Doyle. Thank you. So that's passed. So we now have uh five recommendations for this paper. Let's make sure that everyone, so everyone can see that. So we have the five recommendations there. Um, any other discussion on those recommendations?
Can I just ask that we try and view them all on the one screen if possible, or read through them again, if we may?
So I'm just gonna head over to the acting CEO.
Sorry, Wade has just sent through some advice, so we're uh from LGAQ. So we were just uh through you chair seeking potentially a short adjournment, so we can seek some further counsel on that advice that's come through and perhaps come back. so we can seek some further counsel on that advice that's come through and perhaps come back.
Are you able to share that advice, or you?
I think Wade has emailed it around to everyone now.
Oh, just received it. So, I'll just read out, it says acting mayor, section one sixty five, and also it says a deputy mayor must be appointed. So, this is the advice from the organisation. A deputy mayor must be appointed under section one seventy five. The deputy mayor acts as mayor in all respects pending the applicable process to fill the office as a result of the death, resignation or vacation of office of the mayor. The deputy mayor also acts as mayor if the mayor is ill or otherwise absent and unable to perform the duties. It is considered that absence refers to an inability to perform a function or responsibility, but is not necessarily something which occurs merely because the mayor is physically absent from the council's office, from the local government area or even from Australia. Some things, such as chairing a council meeting, require a physical presence, and the mayor is absent from a council meeting if he or she is not physically there. However, given the contemporary ability to remain constantly in effective communicate, communication from most places in the world, if one wishes to do so, it is suggested that the deputy mayor does not assume the mayor's responsibilities simply because the mayor is not at the council's office at a particular time or on a particular day. If he or she is in effect, effective contact, even from interstate or overseas, able to make a decision or give a direction and wishes to do so, it is not considered that this section allows the deputy mayor to usurp the mayor's role merely because of lack of physical presence. Obviously, a mayor can give notice that he or she is taking a stated period of absence in which he or she does not propose to perform the duties of office, and the deputy mayor will assume the role during any such period. However, it is suggested that a mayor is not required to do so merely because he or she will be physically distant for a period. On the other hand, an absence need not be extended. If the mayor were unable to be located or could not practically perform a function, such as the signing of a document on a particular day, and there were compelling reasons why the document had to be signed on that day, then the deputy mayor could sign the document under this section. In the author's view, absence means inability or unavailability at a particular point in time when something needs to be done by a mayor. It is not necessarily something that comes in distinct blocks of time involving a complete handover of power for a fixed period. A councillor may be appointed as acting mayor where, for one reason or another, there is no mayor or deputy mayor and so on. I won't, I mean, I guess we can publish that as part of that, but that, that advice, and does that come from the department, or where's that come from?
That's come from LGAQ through their commentary service via King &amp; Co.
Okay. So, I think that's quite clear that, that the mayor being overseas can still perform their duties, no need to do it as acting mayor.
Yeah, just as on a point of order, I think it's still equivocal, what the situation is. It, it relates to a, a range of possibilities and circumstances. I don't know why we wouldn't be prepared to follow the usual procedure, which this council, irrespective of other councils, I'm not sure that in the past, this council has routinely recognised, appointed the deputy mayor as the acting mayor in the absence of, for a considerable period, not just a couple of hours in Brisbane or one day in Melbourne. I still think it's, if, if the mayor of the city is away for seventeen days, that it's reasonable to appoint or to have an acting mayor during that period of time.
Thank you for your, your views, and thank you on the history of how council has dealt with that in the past. I mean, obviously, that's a decision of the council to keep the resolution there, just that, you know, the Act overrides a resolution. So, in that case, is there any other discussion? In that case, as the mover, I'll move A through to D first and then E separately. So, I'll put forward A through to D. Do I have a second? I think councillor Doyle, are you happy to give the second of that? I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. I'll now put item E to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. I'll look around the room, it's councillor Madsen, deputy mayor, councillor Tully, councillor Tilly, councillor Martin and councillor Madden. Those against are myself and councillor Augustine. Those abstaining be councillor Doyle. Thank you very much for that. That's it, it's now ten twenty-three, so I suggest that we adjourn, I guess, till ten fifty, if that's okay. Do I have a second for that? Thank you. Put that to the vote, those in favour. Thank you. Shall I call out the name? Was it unanimous? Sorry, I'm just making sure. Councillor Tully, were you voting for? Thank you, it's ten fifty, we'll see you back then. Thank you.
Good morning, it's ten fifty, welcome back from the adjournment. We're up to matter sixteen point three, which is the appointment of Urban Utilities Board members. And you have before you, I guess, recommendations for A, that council endorse the re-appointment of the G K as a board member for Urban Utilities for a period of four years to June twenty twenty nine, and that B, that council endorsed the re-appointment of Jared Pender as a board member for a period of four years to June twenty twenty nine, and that for the CEO be authorised to sign all the instruments for that to happen. Are there any other, are there any questions of council officers? No, I'll move that, do I have a second, thank you, councillor? I'll open up for any discussion. We now move on to item seventeen point one, or seventeen, no, seven point one, so the no-submission from councillor Paul Tully on the truth-telling and healing inquiries, I'll hand over to you councillor Tully to delete this.
Thank you, mayor, I, I moved the motion that I've given a notice of motion for as follows, that having regarded the close affinity between the city of Ipswich and Ipswich First Nations people, Ipswich City Council calls on the Queensland Government to immediately restore the truth-telling and healing inquiry which was disbanded without warning on the twenty eighth of November twenty twenty four, following the repeal of the Path to Treaty Act twenty twenty three, which was originally supported on the tenth of May twenty twenty three by a unanimous vote of the ninety-three members of the Queensland Parliament.
Thank you, do you have a second, I think councillor Doyle is there. As the mover, councillor Tully?
Thank you, mayor, I understand there might be a couple of amendments that might be appropriate to, to deal with, with those if they're agreed to by the mover and second or by the council as a whole.
So I think, has that been shared with the secretariat? Yep, so thank you for sharing those beforehand as well.
Yeah, you just. Yeah, you go.
Okay.
So we'll do councillor Tully's amendment first and then obviously councillor Doyle's.
That's two other, separate amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just, okay. So you're the mover councillor Tully, so you, you mind I say that you had an amendment that you wanted, you want to add a recommendation B?
Yes, now that there's a movement, then there's two other amendments that I'm aware of.
Okay, and councillor Doyle wanted to do an amendment, they're the only two that I'm aware of, so may I deal with those first, so councillor Tully, when you put up your recommendation B?
To, to add a paragraph B as follows, that council offer a repository for truth-telling stories based on verbal, written and electronic submissions for coordination and preservation through Ipswich libraries.
Thank you very much councillor Tully, you're the mover, so I'll just check, now councillor Doyle, you wanted to amend one of those? Or you're proposing?
Thank you, mayor, in relation to A, delete the words having regard to the close affinity between the city of Ipswich and Ipswich First Nations people and insert instead, in recognition of the Ipswich City Council twenty twenty to twenty twenty five Indigenous Accord.
Thank you, I'll check with the mover that motion if he's satisfied with it or not.
I'm happy to accept that amendment.
Okay, so I'll just make sure that that's, I'll just, then I think, I think then councillor Martin, I think, is next to, I'll just wait till that's all up there first, if that's okay, councillor Martin?
I'd just like.
I'll just, I'll come to you in a moment, just, I just want to make sure that the secretary would have got it all there, so everyone has all the information at hand. So before us at the moment is recommendation A and B as per, as your screen, councillor Martin, you wish to move an amendment or?
Yeah, I'd just like to move an amendment that we take out the word immediately, because that's not going to happen, they're not sitting. That's okay with the mover?
Yeah, I'll accept that amendment if the second is willing to do it.
It's in the third line to immediately restore, certainly restore. So councillor Tully, you're okay with that, councillor Doyle, are you okay with that, the word, okay, thank you. Were there any other suggestions of amendments?
Thank you, mayor, not something I've circulated, but I did mention it very briefly to councillor Tully and open to discussion on it, just in relation to A, deleting the words without warning.
I'll just wait for the secretariat. Councillor Tully, were you happy with that?
I've probably got no firm objection to that, I know it was allegedly mentioned in the lead-up to the election, but when it happened in Parliament, it wasn't, it happened without immediate warning or, or parliamentary committee to. I know that can have two meanings, so yes, I'll, I'll accept that amendment.
Yeah, I mean.
Just conscious of trying to remain politically neutral as a local government organisation.
So I'll just wait till Vicky has that up. So the mover agreed, okay, so they're the two we're looking at? Okay, I'll hand over to councillor Tully as the mover, would you like to speak to this notion?
Yes. Paragraph S and B, they are complementary to each other, intended to be complementary, that the truth-telling and healing inquiry, as stated in the motion, was originally supported unanimously in the parliament and it was, had been proceeding and starting to make some, some headway. There is a, a feeling by many people that it was the establishment of a very important inquiry as part of the Path to Treaty Act of two thousand and twenty-three, that led to a situation, and just in brief, the general matter, without a lot of discussion, came up at the local government policy executive on Friday and one of the mayors indicated that they would be establishing a repository in their library for any material that First Nations people or others might be in a position to provide, it could be recordings that which could easily be done on, on phones or maps or drawings or old memorabilia which particular families might have. What was said, and that this is the concern, that when you close down an inquiry like this, the option for the ability to obtain information disappears day by day, week by week, year by year, as, as one generation moves on. And a lot of this is handed down, as we know, from, in families and in Aboriginal communities around Australia, just as word of mouth, and it's important that we record as a nation. But in this case, with the amendment, as a council, we just off, offer this repository, it wouldn't be at any particular cost, it would be the ability just to collate that material on behalf of First Nations people in particular, but there might be significant material held by other people, that if we don't, there is no other formal mechanism in the, in Queensland, but there is in the states one, seventy-seven council areas, and it's the opportunity to preserve some of that important historical material which is disappearing as time marches on. I might just leave it at that and invite any others who've got any comments to.
Thank you councillor Tully, I move to the second. I move to the second, councillor Doyle, do you wish to speak to the motions?
Um, thank you, mayor, I'd just like to thank councillor Tully for bringing this notice of motion forward. Um, as we go about our community every day here in Ipswich, we, um, have a lot of, um, contact with and form relationships with, um, lots of our First Nations people. And, um, there is always lots of, um, stories, history being shared. So, um, I think it's really important that we, we do have a place, a repository, um, to hold that really important information. We've seen, um, what's happened out, I guess, at Deeping Creek. Um, if, if some of that knowledge and some of those stories had have been catalogued, then, um, the situation out there, um, around development and, and the legalities around that may not be as complex to navigate. Um, so we need to learn from the past and, and really document, there's no excuse these days with technology and automation, um, to, to simply document that. In saying that, I'm not underestimating, um, the work that will be involved and particularly the sensitivity overlay to this, as we have different families, different clans here in Ipswich, um, and there's some outstanding native title issues, so, um, but I'm confident council officers will be able to, um, navigate that. Thank you.
Thank you, I think councillor Martin, you heard what?
Yeah, I'd also like to speak to it, mayor, I think it's really good, thank you councillor Tully for alerting me to that. I was certainly oblivious of what had happened, and I think it's really good too that paragraph B, that we actually have an option moving forward. I do also concur with councillor Doyle that it's not political, we're not making political statement at all. It's certainly we're defending the rights and potential storytelling of our First Nations people. Perchance, last week I was at Churchill School where they just opened a yarning circle and had a bit of a yarn to aunty Jill, and certainly concur that that's a really good step that council's taking to record, uh, truth telling and to record stories. So I think it's a great motion, great movement, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Madden?
There's just one problem with the wording, um, it wasn't unanimously passed by the Queensland Parliament. I was there when the vote was taken and I recall that the, uh, three members of the Cataparty and the one member of One Nation voted against the bill. So just need to remove the word unanimous.
Um, I, I looked at the second reading and third reading, uh, there was not a division recorded in Hansard. Um, but if it's true, um, it was declared carried, so, um.
Just the word unanimous.
Could be, um, uh, without, to change by unanimous vote, without, to use the word, without dissent. If they didn't vote, that they, um, it was without dissent, because it's not recorded that it, um, that anyone dissented.
Okay.
So I, I'm happy to.
I'll just check, councillor Madden, would that be satisfactory?
That's okay.
Do you have a, um, councillor Doyle as the second, or would you be happy with that? Okay, so I get, okay, I think we'll just wait for that to come up.
I, I went to the hands hard to just double check.
I'm sure you did.
That was my reading of it, um, um, so they sat there and didn't call for a division.
How fortunate we are we to have a stamp in P E, who was there at the time.
You could use that word.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't unexpected, mayor, that, uh, those, the Cataparty and One Nation would vote against the bill. But I, I can say that I was very pleased that, when it was passed and, uh, uh, probably what I was surprised about, why the bill hadn't been presented earlier in the term of the government. But anyway, um, that's all I have to say, mayor.
Thank you. Although for others to, session, councillor Tully.
Yes, thank you, mayor, uh, just, uh, the irony, I, I guess, of today, we've had in our Community and Support Committee report, the, uh, the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Community Engagement Guide being endorsed by this council and, uh, in, in particular with respect to recommendation B, this is about engagement, and this is probably the most open and honest engagement that we can have. Uh, I would like to see, mayor, um, a report come up to a future, uh, Community and Support Committee, how, uh, we intend to, uh, provide for this particular, uh, repository, because I think it's an important, um, historical information gathering tool. Um, and I know that picture Ipswich do this sort of thing, and our local history room does this sort of thing with respect to local history in general, but perhaps we can get some, um, a report up to a future committee, the relevant committee, which I believe to be the Community and Support, um, Committee, on how we intend to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Madden?
Yeah, just wanted to speak in support for the reasons already outlined, uh, by my fellow councillors. Um, I think it's just an important thing to first, um, recognise what's happened and, you know, pay respect to that and not, not shy away from it. Things happen that need to be recorded and remembered, and from that, hopefully we can build on a better future.
Thank you councillor Madden, any other discussion? Um, in speaking to you, I thank councillor Tully for initiating this discussion on, on truth healing, truth telling, sorry, and healing. Um, as this is state legislation, I'll, I'll admit that I'm not fully across all the detail, um, but I'm kind of surprised that council would seek to adopt a position of council on a matter that represents the views and impacts of our Indigenous community without providing any opportunity for our Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities to have a say. At nine forty four AM today, we endorse the Ipswich City Council Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Community Engagement Guide, which seeks to ensure that council engage with the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities using culturally responsive engagement on matters that concern them. The consultation on this guide was quite significant, it was conducted over two years plus period. Having just over an hour ago, this council committed to meaningfully engage with our Indigenous communities. The very first Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander matter that has come to us as a council after that guide was approved, if this resolution proceeds, would we take a position on an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander matter while ignoring the guide we just approved? If this is a genuine motion, in good governance, in good conscience, council should fulfil its commitment to engage with the community before council considers this matter in the future. The Ipswich City Council Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Community Engagement Guide, page sixty five, states that council would engage with traditional owners' steering committee and the Indigenous elders group on matters that are on social cohesion, community connectedness, unity or other sensitive matters. So I'd like to move a foreshadowed motion A, and leaving B as it is. And I'll hand that to you now. And A, in line with the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Community Engagement Guide and council's community engagement policy, council consults with the Ipswich community to seek its views on advocating to the Queensland Government to restore the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry, and B, to leave as it is. I think the, um, um, picture Ipswich is a great repository, you do have a special section on Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander peoples and communities, and I would fully support, um, recommendation B that you have for. So I'll put that foreshadowed motion up, I'll let Vicky finish. So that's just a foreshadowed motion, that's for A, that only proceeds to be looked at if, um, the current motion, which is from you councillor Tully, um, doesn't get up. Okay, I'll open up for any other discussion. If there's none, I'll hand it to you councillor Tully to, uh, go and reply and then we'll go straight into the vote.
Yeah, uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I think, I don't support the, uh, foreshadowed motion because I think it's unnecessary. Uh, for this reason, that we as a, um, a local government in our own right have the, um, power and perhaps even the duty under paragraph A to state our position, as other councils can, in relation to the repeal of that act. But more importantly, under paragraph B, this is only an offer from the council, offer a repository. And a repository is a way in which, uh, records can be made and deposited and recorded for the future. Um, I don't think anyone can criticize a council or suggest that there is any, anything wrongful or improper in just simply making an offer at large to the community to act in good faith to receive any of those, uh, submissions, uh, which touch on the issues which the, uh, Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry, uh, would have done. And I think within the city of Ipswich and beyond, we'll, we'll find other councils that are prepared to do the same. It's not a, it's a, it'd be virtually at no cost because it was just, would just, uh, keep the, uh, records intact, uh, whatever form they're made in, written or electronic submissions, or even verbal if people wanted to, uh, make recordings. So, um, I don't think we need to have technicalities, uh, you know, raised in relation to the foreshadowed motion, given the circumstance where we're only making, you know, paragraph B, only making an offer. Um, it's not a demand, it's not a request, it's not a requirement, it doesn't hinge on people's rights. Um, I think our First Nations people here would be very appreciative of the opportunity to make a, uh, a submission and know that it's been recorded in the records of the city of Ipswich for all time.
Thank you, so we put recommendation A to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. So it's everyone in the room except for myself, uh, those against are myself, so the motion is carried. We'll now put, um, recommendation B to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you, and thank you for having a, a respectful discussion on that.
Mayor, before you proceed, I have a motion to suspend, uh, meeting procedures.
Okay.
Okay, I knew that so much of the meeting procedures be suspended to enable the immediate consideration of the current industrial dispute with Ipswich City Council and to consider any relevant motion in relation to the matter.
So, um, the industrial dispute is a matter, is an operational matter for the, the CEO, can I have a bit of a?
I, I don't know what, yeah, I, I'm moving that, um, I don't know what you mean by an operational matter.
Okay, so you're moving you wish to discuss the industrial dispute?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm seeking advice from the CEO, is there any reason why, is there a way, that could happen? Okay, thank you, do we have a second or?
Oh, there's no requirement for a second.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Mayor under eleven point, one point one J.
Okay, okay, we'll put that to the vote, who wishes to suspend standing orders so we can discuss the industrial dispute? Put your hand up. So in the room, everyone but myself has their hand up, those against, myself. So, um, it's now carried, so susp, so standing orders are now suspended to discuss.
Could I suggest that we move into a closed session?
Oh, okay.
In relation to, I'm not sure, I've got the, uh, I think it's a, might be, of that, uh, format, it might be.
Um, I think it would be two five four J three B, industrial matters affecting employees.
Employees, yeah, I'll formally move that.
And do we have a second for that, I think councillor Doyle, you were seconding that? Um, put that into the vote, those in favour to go into closed session. I think that's unanimous, so we'll go into closed session now to discuss the industrial matter. Thank you.
Okay, welcome. I think we've just had, it's now 11:49, we just went into closed session. And I want to thank Councilor Tully for suggesting this topic. I didn't, I did in the beginning vote against it, not to discuss it, because I thought we were going to make some type of decision. But I really appreciate the fact that we went into closed session and it was good to have a lot of, I think, Q and A and a good discussion amongst ourselves. So, thank you.
Can I just formally move that we resume our normal meeting procedure?
Yes, I'm happy to second that. Any discussion, vote, those in favour? Thank you. We're back now in the standing orders. Item 18 is questions on notice. There are none. Just before we close, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas in Ipswich. I don't know if there's anyone else wants to say a Merry Christmas to everyone, but I hope everyone stays safe. Let's hope the weather settles down a little bit and hope everyone has a lot of fun with their friends and family. With that, I'll close the meeting at 11:50. Thank you.